I'd like to call this meeting to order. Secretary Pasqua, will you please read the Statement of Compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before we begin, I'd like to welcome members of the public to this open meeting, but also request that our audience respect the meeting space of the Board of Trustees and remain in the Audience section so that the university is able to efficiently conduct its business and ensure other members of the public can hear the proceedings. Pursuant to Public Law 1975, Chapter 231, the Open Public Meetings Act, public notice of this meeting was filed on June 23, 2023 with the Office of the Secretary of the State of New Jersey and three newspapers, The Cherry Hill Carrier Post, the New Brunswick Commune Tribune, and the Newark Star-Ledger. Public notice of the meeting was posted in the following university libraries, the Alexander Library in New Brunswick, the Dana Library in Newark, and the Robeson Library in Camden. Pursuant to Public Law 2020, Chapter 11, public notice of this meeting has been posted on the Rutgers website under Governing Boards. Now I'd like to take a minute to announce you've all seen the agenda and the meeting materials. Does anyone have a potential conflict of interest to disclose at this time? If you're on Zoom, you can just wave your hands wildly. Okay. Seeing as there are none, we can continue. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Good afternoon and happy Summer Solstice Day. This is the longest day of the year, and hopefully we can run the meeting so we're not spending it here in this meeting for the majority of the time. I just wanted to make a few comments. This is the end of the academic year, and the end of the year offers a chance for reflection. I wanted to start our last meeting of the year by giving thanks. This is the last Board of Trustees meeting for Pete McDonough, Senior Vice President, External Affairs, who is retiring at the end of July, I understand now. Pete has been a source of knowledge and support for our university and for the Board of Trustees. Pete has not just been a source of expertise for the Board of Trustees, but a friend. Pete, on behalf of the Board of Trustees, thank you for all that you have done for Rutgers and for our board during these many years. We wish you all the best in your next chapter. Thank you to President Holloway and all members of his administration. Special thanks for those who work especially close with our board, Brian Valentine, Tony Calcato, Mike Gower, Pat Hobbs, John Hoffman, Kimberly Hopeley, Prabhas Mohi. Thank you to the Chancellors, Chancellor Cantor, Chancellor Conway, Chancellor Strom, and Chancellor Tillis for keeping us informed and for the educational sessions at our board meetings. Thank you to our faculty senate representatives, Dr. Schwartz and Professor Boikas. Thank you to our student representatives, Brielle Fedorko and Tumi Ayarinde. We do have four trustees who are sitting in their last meeting as voting trustees today and who have given 12 years of outstanding service to the Board of Trustees. I will have more to say about them later at our annual dinner, but I do want to publicly recognize them for their service now. Dr. Ron Garudi, Dr. Roberta Kanarak, Dr. Deborah Lynch, and Mr. Jim Rhodes. Our board can't function efficiently without people who work behind the scenes. These individuals work in the office of the Secretary, and I want to recognize them today. Secretary Pasqua, thank you for your organizational skills and support for the board, including nights and weekends. Associate Secretary Malillo, thank you for your patience, your listening, your hard work, and for always being there for the trustees and for our leadership team, especially including nights and weekends. Assistant Secretary Barba Tudner, thank you, not just for your work on the board, but also for talking to me about Rutgers basketball. Sylvie Duvison, I don't know if you're here or in the wings, but thank you for complying the attendance statistics, all of the other statistical information that I and leadership team have asked for this year. Tiffany Hart, thank you for setting up for all of our meetings. Thank you for ordering food and refreshments for our meetings. Thank you for always being cheerful. I want to especially thank you for cheese steaks at Nominating Committee and making sure I don't forget my coat. Anthony Stecker, thank you for providing the minutes to all of our meetings. I apologize in advance that this might be a longer set of minutes. I want to thank all of our committee chairs for all the extra time they put into our board's work. Gary Kropovka, Chair of Joint Committee on Investments; Mike Duhame, Chair of Task Force and Legislative Engagement; David Harris, Chair of Committee on Trustee Philanthropy; Uniqua Cadre, who chaired last year's Task Force on Assessment; Deborah Lynch, Chair of Nominating Committee; Terry Rodriguez, Chair of Committee on Diversity and inclusion and Outreach; Squire Servants, Chair of this year's Task Force on Assessment, and who coordinated our meet and greets for new trustees. Thank you all. I want to thank the members of our Executive Committee for all the extra work that they did in helping to keep us engaged and on track to achieve our goals this year. Anthony Covington, Chris Foglio, Elsie Perez, and Jim Rhodes. Thank you all. I want to thank two people who were especially important leading this board, our vice chairs, Amy Mansu and Ken Johnson. The Board of Trustees have a leadership team for a reason. I could not have been more blessed with better vice chairs to have as part of a leadership team than Amy and Ken. I thank you, my fellow trustees, for having the wisdom to vote for them as part of this year's leadership team. From committee assignments to goals to matters at hand on nights and weekends, Amy and Ken were always available to me and our board. I consider myself lucky to have them as part of this year's leadership team, and our board is very fortunate to be able to draw upon the talents of Amy as next year's chair and Ken as vice chair again next year. Joined by Mary Papamarko as the second of next year's vice chairs, the leadership of this board is well qualified to meet whatever challenges may occur next year. Our future is bright. Finally, I want to thank you, my fellow trustees. We all grow up wanting the American dream, don't we? Our students work hard to achieve that dream, and they are big dreams. Rutgers is too great for small dreams. But many of our students have to constantly fight to keep that dream against all forces or circumstances that want to take it away from them, economic, family, health. What happens when circumstances use all their means to take away our students' dreams to determine their fate? It is your work, my fellow trustees, to help our students achieve the American dream, their dreams. Thank you for all that you do to help our students, and thank you for all that you do for Rutgers. I do want to close with a bit of housekeeping. Please fill out your assessment survey that is available for completion on Director's desk. We do need them completed by June 30, excuse me, June 30, so that next year's leadership team can plan next year's work based on your input. It's been a very busy year for Rutgers, a lot of happenings. The Board of Governors are our partners, working together for the betterment of Rutgers. But one of the responsibilities of the Board of Trustees, and this is a unique responsibility, is that we, as trustees, are supposed to be an active part of the university, to be part of the life of the university. When I began my term as chair, I felt that due to the COVID pandemic and its aftermath, our board had drifted away from this responsibility. You might recall that I challenged you in my first meeting as chair to become more actively involved and present at our beloved university. Based on your input, I saw it increase communication with you to help further this responsibility. As we will see when we go over our goals for the year later in this meeting, you responded admirably to the challenge. I thought that I might conclude my remarks with a quote from President George H.W. Bush that I am reminded of when I think about Rutgers and that I think encompasses our duty as trustees in working toward President Holloway's vision of a beloved community. And I quote, "I take as my guide the hope of the saint. In crucial things, unity; in important things, diversity; in all things, generosity." I now call upon President Holloway for his remarks.
That was really quite beautiful, Mr. Chair. If anybody was not thanked personally, I thank you. Just as I got to get a little bit of something in there. And that's in the jokes in my presentation. Admissions. This year's admissions cycle was different from any other year because of two major factors. We switched to the Common App, which resulted in huge increases in applications, an amount that was intimidating to our own processes, we'll be able to handle it. And then the federal government's long delays connected with its very fumbled rollout of the new FAFSA forms, which caused us and other schools to push back our acceptance deadline from May 1st to June 1st. It still is early days, and we'll have to keep in mind possible summer melt, but on the whole, against incredible odds, we have a very positive story to tell, certainly due to the hard work of many people. Enrollment numbers university-wide are higher than at this point last year, and we've seen our out-of-state and international new student enrollments rebound to pre-pandemic levels. I also have to note that among those reporting SAT scores, the average rose by 20 points from last year's new students. In New Brunswick, admit Cummings, the first-year and transfer students who have accepted our offer of admission and have paid their deposits. In New Brunswick, admit Cummings are up about 9% from this time last year. The admissions numbers for Newark are also strong, with current year-over-year increase in first-year and transfer admit coming of more than 21%. In Camden, admit coming for first-year students and transfers is currently about 3% lower it was at this point last year, but this is an unusual admissions cycle and will extend through the summer, and usually Camden's numbers are the last to solidify. I'm cautiously optimistic. This is a season of transitions. We've already heard about Pete McDonough, of course, receiving yet another standing ovation. Nancy Cantor is completing her tenure at Rutgers, Newark, and becoming president of Hunter College. Executive Vice Chancellor Jeffrey Robinson is moving into an interim chancellor for the next year as we conduct a search for Nancy's successor. Jeffrey, welcome. The search will have a focus on listening and stakeholder engagement, true to our role as an anchor institution in the city of Newark. We've selected a firm and will conduct a closed search, which means we won't make public the names of the finalists until we announce the person who will lead Newark going forward. Executive Vice President Prabhas Mohi will co-chair the search, and joined by a senior member of the Newark faculty, and Chief of Staff Brian Valentine will staff the committee. We'll be announcing the search committee towards the end of the summer. As Chancellor Cantor begins her new presidency, I want to publicly thank her for her leadership and dedication to Newark over the past decade. Pete McDonough, we thanked you enough. John Hoffman. I can only say that with Pete. He knows the joke is from the heart. I do want to also congratulate John Hoffman, our Senior Vice President and General Counsel, on his nomination. I want to congratulate John Hoffman, our Senior Vice President and General Counsel, on his nomination by Governor Murphy to the state Supreme Court. He will continue as general counsel until such time as he gets to wear his graduation robes on a daily basis. Well, I thought that was funny, but anyway.
It's a rough crowd today.
It's a rough crowd. We're very excited for John and his future. I'm assuming a smooth confirmation process. His loss is the state's gain. We have ongoing initiatives that are university-wide, one in artificial intelligence initiative with new hires being made and cross-disciplinary community forming around studying the societal benefits and implications of AI, machine learning, and data science. This is a world we're already in the midst of, of course, and none of us knows how this is going to turn out, but we better make sure we are informed. I asked for a civic, I handled a civic engagement task force in the fall to present a summary of how we are, as a university, engaging in the work of democracy and service and civil discourse and civic engagement, and that task force will offer its recommendations to me in the coming weeks. In the spirit of democracy, the Eagleton Institute, which serves the entire university, received a $7 million anonymous gift, which is about exploring innovative efforts to help overcome divisiveness in the national discourse and encourage engagement in democracy through social media instead of having social media sow discord and division. I want to use the remainder of my comments today to share with the board and the community the work we are doing this summer coming out of a difficult academic year, an academic year that presented challenges for higher education across the nation. Many of the members of our community made meaningful, thoughtful suggestions for how to forge a path forward, and I want to thank them publicly. These groups include Chancellor Conway's Advisory Council on Antisemitism and Jewish Life, and Advisory Council on Arab, Muslim, and Palestinian Life, the Jewish Faculty Administration and Staff Group, another informal group of Jewish faculty members, faculty from Middle Eastern Studies more broadly, the Leadership of the Center for Islamic Life, Hillel, Chabad, and so many others. We have a world-class faculty and the most dedicated staff in higher education and a student body unlike any in America. The input we have received from them shows the strength and caring for our community. Last month, I testified before the U.S. House Committee on Education and the Workforce about Rutgers' response to antisemitism. During my testimony, I reiterated Rutgers' commitment to battling antisemitism, Islamophobia, and hatred in all of its forms. I approached my testimony with an open heart and an open mind. I know that there are things we could have done better this past year, and I know, too, that at every step of our journey, we prioritize the safety of our students, the protection of our community's First Amendment rights, and the foundational importance of academic freedom. I express those principles to the committee on May 23, and I underscore them to you today. As I told the committee, I have committed to forming a university-wide advisory group to help us navigate campus tensions and to advise us on programming and how we articulate and demonstrate our principles. I'm working with the Chancellors now on the formation of this representative university-wide group. Our executive leadership, staff, and faculty can all benefit from opportunities for training. Some of this training will need to be issue-specific, such as defining and identifying antisemitism and Islamophobia. Other training, some of which is already underway, focuses on dialogue across difference, especially dealing with polarizing issues in the classroom, and how to intervene as a bystander witnessing bigotry. Last year, our policies were tested by a combination of protests, hyperpolarized social media activity, and a handful of truly horrendous incidents of targeting. Rutgers is always reviewing its policies to ensure that they are sufficient for our current environment, and this summer is no different. The university is assessing our policies related to time, place, and manner of protests with the prospect of continued unrest in the fall. We are also taking steps to make reporting on bias incidents more transparent. We are in a period of heightened reporting. This is a good thing. The university has made significant efforts to make it easy to report incidents of bias because we know that often the hardest step in addressing wrongdoing is speaking up. We are working to provide insight for our community about reports we receive, their nature, and whether or not they are actionable. All of these steps are in addition to our work in responding to requests made by the students with whom we met with peacefully ending, in peacefully ending the protest last month. So much of what we respond to involves our collective behavior as a community. Since I arrived at Rutgers, I have emphasized civil discourse and public service on behalf of the common good as the attributes I would like Rutgers to be known for. I will continue to advocate for them, now more than ever, and I will continue to use my office to position Rutgers as a national model for higher education. To achieve this vision, our community needs to model the world we want, providing space for shared humanity, for understanding, for listening, and for fostering speech instead of discouraging it. It will be incumbent on each of us to lead the way. You'll hear more in the coming weeks about individual aspects of what I have shared today. I look forward to further conversations. At this point, I'll see time to Vice Chair Mansu.
Thank you, President Holloway. I would like to read a resolution today and then offer, open the floor for some, a few comments, which I know are going to be out there. Dr. Alan Crosta. Whereas Rutgers, the state university of New Jersey, has benefited greatly from your selfless service on the Board of Trustees since your induction as a charter trustee in 2013, whereas your term as an alumnus trustee and chair of the Board of Trustees will come to a close on June 30, 2024, whereas your discerning judgment and wise counsel have helped guide the Board of Trustees and your alma mater through numerous milestones and challenges, and your passion and commitment throughout your trusteeship will long stand as a model for all current and future trustees to emulate. And whereas an alumnus trustee since 2017, your insightful leadership as vice chair of the Board of Trustees from 2021 to 2023, and as chair from 2023 to 2024, have promoted open and effective communication between the board's leadership and its members while also fostering a spirit of camaraderie among trustees by encouraging them to connect and engage with the Rutgers community. Whereas a true loyal son of Rutgers, you have exhibited unwavering commitment to advancing the academic pursuits of all Rutgers students by strengthening the Scarlet Promise Endowment through initiatives that have increased giving among trustees. Whereas you have further demonstrated exemplary stewardship as chair of the Board of Trustees, nominating committee, and the Task Force on Assessment, and you have left an enduring, indelible mark on the university and its students through your participation on the Board of Governors committees, on academic and student affairs, intercollegiate athletics, audit, health affairs, finance, and facilities. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the members of the Board of Trustees of Rutgers, the state university of New Jersey, express their deepest gratitude and heartfelt thanks to Alan M. Crosta, Jr., for his distinguished service to the university, and the Board of Trustees extends to him sincere best wishes for continued success in the future. And be it further resolved that Alan M. Crosta, Jr. will continue to enjoy our highest esteem and that your colleagues look forward to reaping the benefit of his experience and inspiration as he continues to serve Rutgers University as a member of the Board of Governors. I would ask for a motion, then, to accept the resolution.
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any discussion? I missed that, so would anybody like to offer comments before I offer mine?
Well, I could say that Alan is an alumnus not only of Rutgers University, but Rutgers University Medical School. He's a distinguished physician, someone that the state medical university, Rutgers, is very proud of Alan. Thank you for your service. You're a double alumnus of our undergraduate and, of course, of our medical university, and we thank you from our heart.
Thank you very much. Other comments, please, Mr. Harris.
I want to remind everybody that Alan, during the COVID times, served as the glue by hosting lunches and dinners for years and never submitted the cost for reimbursement. He is a gentleman who I think, for those of us who came on the board during COVID, he really saved our service for those two years when we couldn't meet, and I will forever be indebted to him for that.
Thank you. I also benefited from those dinners, but what Alan also offered was that ability to reach out and touch leadership. And as a new trustee, sometimes you're a little overwhelmed, nervous, afraid, whatever word you want to select, but he made the ability to reach out to leadership just so possible and so easily obtained. So I just thank you for that. Because of that, I think I maybe blossomed a little earlier than I could have. I could have just kind of, you know, stepped back a little bit more, but you're like, come on, let's go, let's do, and you were always available. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Linda. Other trustees. Jean.
Yeah, I started as a trustee in 1990. There's seems to be really great chairs and not so great chairs. I won't tell you who the others are, but you have really stepped it up. I have confidence in Amy, because I've known her forever, that she can at least beat your level, but I'll tell you, you have really cared about each trustee. You've been meeting with people all over the state. I didn't realize you were paying for it. Actually, we paid for ourselves, too. But you have really been a fantastic leader, and you really cared, and that caring showed. You cared about the university and its students and its faculty and its staff, but you also cared very much about this group of trustees, and I greatly appreciated that one.
Thank you, Jean. Roberta.
Along those lines, Alan definitely was demanding, and he logically, logically wanted the trustees to attend events about which they were going to make decisions, which logically, but he also did everything to make it possible. I know my joke at two of the three convocations that I went to was that I had my own attending physician. I really wanted to process. I had recovered from a hip replacement, and Alan was right there next to me. We were processing together. So that's just another example of how helpful he is.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Bob.
Yeah, the only thing I want to say is Alan would never ask anybody to do anything that he was unwilling to do or didn't do, and I think that is the epitome of leadership. So thank you.
Ron, and then Jim.
So Alan and I have known each other a long, long time, and I probably want to make this more personal, but I cannot avoid the comments that have been made by everybody. Alan, we use the phrase, this is what excellence looks like at Rutgers, and we mean many things by it in many areas, but this, your term here, I mean, your whole years of service speak to the kind of leader you are, your leadership in your hospital career as chair of a major department, but you have set the example, as Jean said, for all future chairs at Rutgers. You care about this university deeply, and you live it. You don't just talk about it, you live it. It was my privilege to have been your mentor in the early years of our time together on the board, and you quickly surpassed that and said, Ron, I know all that, I know, you know. But really, on a personal level and a professional level, we were blessed to have your leadership. So thank you, my friend.
Jim, and then Frank.
Thank you. I first got to know Alan on the, really, on the nominations committee, and I witnessed his leadership skills then, as he brought us all together to align as one in our, in our work. And I've gotten to know him even better now on the Executive Committee. Alan is an inclusive leader. He listens. He hears you, and I've seen him change his mind, and I think that's just a mark of somebody who is a remarkable, a remarkable leader, and I will miss working with him.
Frank. Hunley.
Yeah, hi. Alan is my classmate, so he makes the class of '86 proud, so I'm really pleased about that. And as someone who has sat in Alan's shoes, I just want to say I, I think he's done a phenomenal job as chair of the Board of Trustees. I think he'll do a great job on the Board of Governors, and I couldn't be more proud to call him my classmate and my friend, and I'm just so, so, I think he's so deserving of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank.
So everyone has talked about how amazing a trustee and chair Alan is, and I'm going to say Alan is even better friend, and I couldn't be more grateful for calling you my friend, and I've known you probably since before I joined the board, you, Ron, Mark, Ken, from athletics, and, and you have been there to listen when I've had trouble. You've been my de facto attending physician when I had questions, but as good as a chair and trustee you are, you're an even better human being and friend.
I'll be brief. I'll use Maya Angelou's words to say what I have to say, and that is, when people show you who they are, believe them. And I think he has shown himself to be a true friend, a true confidant, an exemplary trustee. I thank you for making me feel so comfortable entering this board, and others have said that, too. And what you see is what you get, and just thank you, and wishing you the best.
I'll wrap up. Alan, to whom much is given, much is required, and you have certainly given it back to all of us, and we thank you for your dedication and your leadership. May I ask, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Alan.
Does anyone have any questions for President Holloway?
I was trying to move to Vice Chair Mansu very quickly for reasons, but go ahead.
Mine's a softball-ish question. Since the date for the decisions was moved out, normal, the FAFSA stuff moved a lot of the dates around. What, is there a drop dead date that people have had to get back to us by? Is that June first?
It was June first, but this is a year where we're just kind of, we're going to have to roll with things a little bit. And that's not unusual in any given year. FAFSA of our three campuses prior to the new and improved FAFSA, it just, it just, it just lends itself, right? Camden was always the last of our three campuses because that is by demographics, the campus most affected by need in terms of FAFSA. And so this, this is why my, I'm cautiously optimistic as we sort things out over the course of summer. And it really goes with Camden, deep into August where things are, are firmed up.
Zhang, when I have any other questions for President Holloway? Thank you, President Holloway. We're going to move now into our educational session, and I feel like we haven't heard from Chancellor Strom and RBHS in, in oh so long. And today is everything about RBHS. So I call on Chancellor Strom now for his report.
And Alan has told me I only have four hours for this. But, but I do talk fast, so I'm going to cover a lot, a lot of material. So I began my almost eleven years here now with this, and I begin every, and end every talk over that time period with the same mantra. My goal as RBHS Chancellor is to build one of the best academic health centers in the country with an emphasis on one. I'm going to briefly give you a little bit of background, just to remind those who haven't seen it before of who we are, Rutgers Health at RBHS, and then spend most of the time on a progress report. These are our primary entities on the left-hand side of the schools, on the right-hand side of the chancellor-level institutes and our clinical units. Our schools have increasingly become multi-campus. The, a few of them are still on one of our two primary campuses, New Brunswick and Newark, but, but most have extended to the other campus as well. Again, on the right-hand side of the chancellor-level institutes, we have two hundred and fifty centers and institutes overall, but, but those are the primary ones that report to me and our two clinical units on the bottom right. University Behavioral Healthcare, University Correctional Healthcare, together about a $400 million a year operation. So to give you a sense of us, RBHS at a glance, we're about twenty-five-hundred paid faculty, about four thousand volunteer faculty, ten thousand staff, thirteen hundred clinical providers, seventeen hundred interns and residents, fifty-five-hundred, fifty-six-hundred students, forty-nine leaking buildings, with, with one more not to leak under construction, roughly six thousand, six million square feet of space. And, and this gives you some other data with that. Our annual budget revenue is, is now about approaching $2.5 billion a year. This is my leadership team, my senior vice chancellors, though these are, they were a lot younger in these pictures than they look now. And those who know them can confirm that. Kathy Buemwell is, is my senior vice chancellor for, for finance administration, Vicente Gracias for clinical affairs, Bishop Omri for academic affairs and research, what a normal university would call a provost, but by law I have two provosts, so this is a different role. And Stephen Andreasen is, is my chief of staff. I'm very proud of our leaders. This is my list of, or not list, but this is my, the RBHS deans. We, we take this picture at, at the commencement each year. These are my vice chancellors and provosts. These are my center and institute directors. And again, just to give, give you a quick, very quick overview of, of who we are. Progress report. When I walked in, we were on a trajectory for a deficit of $54 million and Rutgers didn't know that. I didn't know that. But it became clear within a few weeks of coming here. We have since spent a lot of time correcting that and moving us into, into the black instead of in, into the red. The one exception being the COVID year, as you can see in fiscal twenty. The, the, how did we do that? We have focused a lot on revenue enhancement rather than just austerity measures. The growth in major sources of revenue were depicted below and have been key to the financial turnaround. A lot of what I've been doing over the course of the years has also been recruiting. I've replaced eighty percent of my deans, all my institute directors, eighty percent of my department chairs. And in fact, I won't be joining you for dinner tonight because we're interviewing, I'm having dinner with a school of nursing dean candidate because unfortunately our current school of nursing dean, who's fantastic, but her husband has gotten very ill and, and she needs to retire in order to, to help care for him. But my chief of staff began this in 2016 in terms of recruits are coming to RBHS from, from all these different places. This is the most recent slide, the logos get smaller and smaller in the process as we recruit people from all over the country. And one of the things that's wonderful has, has been our ability to recruit fantastic people of, of a kind that the, the old UMDNJ never used to get. The most recent dean is a new dean of school, School of Health Professions. He came from, from University of Cincinnati. In addition, we have a new joint chair of neurosurgery. He's chair at both medical schools and as well as being service line lead for neurosurgery, of course RWJ Barnabas Health. Bob is rather exceptional in many ways, especially as a clinical neurosurgeon. He has been NIH funded himself for many, many years. The, since 2005, PI of five projects, as well as being a co-investigator in many others. He is also, he came from, from Emory. He led Emory, he was principal investigator, he led Emory's MD/PhD program for a clinical neurosurgeon as a nationally famous surgeon. He just had a patient come up that he was treating yesterday from Georgia. He attracts patients from all over the country for treatment with him. He is also a phenomenal academic. The other new, new recruit is our new vice chancellor for communications and marketing, a so-called RCOMs. Bill Warren has been appointed as vice chancellor for communications and marketing. This is a, a program that Fran and I share as, as a marketing program between New Brunswick and RBHS, and, and he's truly fantastic. We're delighted to have, have him with us. Shifting gears, a strategic plan. We are now in the second, completing the second year of our second strategic plan. This is 2022 to 27. Mission is to provide exceptional healthcare, education and training, research and discovery for the people of New Jersey and beyond. Vision to be a distinguished national model for healthcare access and quality, research and innovation, interprofessional education in healthcare and community service and engagement. Values dedicated to respect, collaboration, inclusion, excellence, innovation and accountability in all that we do. This is a very extensive document involving hundreds, hundreds, at least maybe thousands of people in creating it. I won't go into it in detail, but just to give you an overview, there's four, what we call U-goals, unifying themes, and five M-goals, that is mission goals. So the U-goals are things like people and workforce, inclusive, respectful and accountable culture, team-based approaches, enabling systems and structures, connections and identity. The mission goals are clinical care, education and training, research and innovation and community engagement. We have, this process, as it began, sort of halfway through reviewing what we went through, to quote my chief of staff, it was clear this was neither strategic nor a plan. It was really just a wish list of all, of all of those people. We, we did get it focused, and the, the implementation plan has sort of blown up more again, so there's five hundred and sixty-something goals that we, that we're tracking in our, in our dashboard. But, but, you know, some key accomplishments, celebrating a decade of excellence, our one year, our tenth year anniversary, creating a new identity and brand of Rutgers Health, and I'll talk a little bit more about that, addressing health equity with, with a health equity symposium that included speakers from, from prominent speakers from all over the country, as well as local, and promoting diversity, equity, inclusion, with really institutional transformation with the Rutgers Health Diversity Strategic Plan. Other key accomplishments, building a new, new spaces, Rutgers Health Building at the Helix site in New Brunswick, and we'll talk a little bit more about that, sparking new discoveries and increased and sponsored awards by forty percent over the past five years. Our funding, as you'll see in a minute, extramural funding has more than doubled over the course of, annually, over the course of, of the ten years we have brought into the university and into New Jersey over these ten years, $3.7 billion in, in extramural funding. Other key accomplishments, forging a stronger future, seeking combined accreditation for the Rutgers School, New Rutgers School of Medicine. We'll talk more about that, and transforming the Newark campus as plans begin to fully upgrade and modernize the medical science building there. We'll talk about, more about as well. Few more key accomplishments, advancing clinical and translational science, the CTSA award, NJAX. We'll talk more about unlocking novel insights. We have gotten, we have created a clinical research data warehouse. All of the electronic medical record data, the Epic data, installed, of course, the entire RWJ Barnabas Health system, population, covering a population of roughly five million people, has been downloaded to us and continues to be downloaded to us as a research tool for, for use for, for our faculty research-wise. Learning through service, the Rutgers Health Service Corps has been launched, I'll talk a little bit more about that, and empowering tomorrow's workforce, learning health system and national grant that we've gotten, embedding scientist training and, and research. Shifting gears, research awards. These, these are our annual research awards that you see. As you can see, we have markedly grown, more than doubling over the course of, of the decade. Fiscal twenty-one, there was a blip that we thought was, it was a COVID blip, as more research money became available because of COVID, we thought that was going to be temporary, but we've since already exceeded that as well. So some particular rankings of relevance. If you see there, this on the right-hand side, I think I have, I can use the, the pointer. Our grant is funding the, and this now NIH funding, or NIH funding is now $183 million, grew another 10% in fiscal twenty-two, twenty-three. And Rutgers in general, as you can see, as part of that, is, is now in the top fifty for NIH funding. If you look, of course, our schools, our two medical schools combined represent about $144 million, million dollars, so about eighty percent of the share of that, again, a roughly 10% increase in funding. If you look at rankings thereby, combining the two medical schools puts us immediately into the top fifty in funding. And again, we, we are growing funding-wise at a rapid clip. Some specific accomplishments, the National Cancer Institute has awarded the Rutgers Cancer Institute of New Jersey another five-year re-designation as the state's only comprehensive NCI-designated cancer center. And if you watch TV, you see ads with Steve Labuti on it where he says that about five times. Despite what other cancer centers in the state advertise, this is the state's only comprehensive, NCI-designated comprehensive cancer center. It's one of fifty-six in the nation. We scored in the exceptional range, placing it among the top cancer centers reviewed in 2023 in the country, total grant size of about $17 and a half million. We had a major ceremony publicizing that. In addition, Clinical and Translational Science Award, NIH funds a support system for a nationwide network of medical institutions to expedite research from the laboratory into patients. It is ironic that with New Jersey as the medicine chest of the world, it never had a CTSA, and in fact, it never even applied for CTSA before this. Sixty institutions nationwide receive CTSA funding analogous to the fifty-six or NCI-designated. In 2018, we recruited, or 2016, we recruited Ray Panettiere. In, in 2018, he led the creation of the New Jersey Alliance for Clinical and Translation Research, NJAX, with Rutgers leading it, including Princeton, NJIT, Rob Roy Johnson, Barnabas Health, drug companies, et cetera. It'd be really a statewide entity. We've just been advised that we have, that he applied a year early. I was clear, explicit with him, if I was on his review committee, I mean, it was wise to apply in case he didn't get it the first time, apply early, but I told him if I was on his review committee, he was applying a year early, I would have been much tougher on him because he still had a year worth of funding left. And, but in fact, he got the, as an initial award, forty million, it will probably be fifty million before it's over, before it's done, over, over seven years to build and improve on the, the infrastructure that had been created. This new award was based on a score of twenty-two, NIH scores, ten is the best, ninety is the worst. It's one of the best in class, and this is an enormously successful grant. The new Rutgers Health Building, part of the Helix site, that will provide state-of-the-art dry and wet labs to further elevate NJAX and Rutgers to prominent leadership positions in translational science. Philanthropy, we are now exceeding $100 million a year in philanthropy in terms of, of, again, the, the RBHS part of, of the university, of the foundation. Rutgers Health is the brand we chose to, to move to as, as part of our strategic plan. Rutgers was no-brainer in terms of the, because the reputation of the university. Health was our endgame, a new dimension for Rutgers, and acknowledges the whole that we want to keep people healthy and not just treat them once they get sick. The, we've had a Rutgers Health branding campaign underway to raise awareness about Rutgers Health, introduce the brand to people who are not familiar, that Rutgers is an academic health center and providing healthcare, and reintroduce ourselves to the tri-state area. Multi-channel campaign, which is run from September twenty-three, was originally through May twenty-fourth, but it's not ending, and including out-of-home advertising, digital social ads, commercials on TV, with a geographic focus being on New Jersey and border counties and Pennsylvania and New York. The billboards focus on the four pillars of Rutgers Health, education, research, community outreach and clinical care. This gives you a sense of the, with the billboards you've probably seen, you know, this could be the cure, the key to curing cancer, that's supposed to be a streptococcus. The, the, we didn't want it to look too realistic because it might be scary to people, but, you know, it could be the key to curing cancer, we're going to find out. We've had events at football games. We also have, you know, our mac, our microscopes and magnifying, hope we're listening to more than your heart. This is in the Newark Airport, in the space that, that Mike pays for, and academic health is working for you, is, is the, and so this, this has, is, is going there. This has won, this ad campaign has won multiple different awards, going forward for, for what, what it, it has been doing. Shifting gears again, RBHS Physical Master Plan. Lot, there's been lots of construction across, in, in, you know, ten years ago across Rutgers because of a huge capital investment. We had almost none of it. That was not, that is not a complaint. It's because, A, it was, all the planning was completed before we were part of the university, and we had not done the strategic planning necessary to really be, be prepared for it. And it made, it makes no sense to invest in capital until you have the program planned accordingly. That's now changed, and our current capital planning and construction initiatives include four things that I'll briefly go through. NGMS Medical Science Building renovation in Newark, a new university hospital building, again, not university hospital, Newark is not ours, but is our principal teaching hospital in Newark, the Rob Roy Johnson Barnabas Morris Cancer Pavilion, and, and the Rutgers Health Building in New Brunswick. So let me brief, very briefly go through each of those. The, the RBHS Newark Physical Master Plan calls again for the, to assist the university hospital in Newark in its planning, but especially the renovation of the Medical Science Building. And you can see here what, what the, it will look like once done. This building is in horrendous shape. That's very much an understatement, and those trustees who toured it with us a while back, yeah, significant parts of the building are unusable, leaks everywhere, the heating and ventilation system is terrible. It, it is an abysmal building, but it is massive and too big to knock down, in addition to the fact that we're using it along the way. You can't knock it down as an active building. So there is a detailed plan. This gives you a little bit of the sense of, of deferred maintenance. I'm not showing you the raccoons who live there. The raccoons, by the way, which we've got pictures of, they're not photoshopped, they're real. The- The, the, so this building needs work. The project goals is to replace and upgrade the entire building infrastructure. Historically, it'll ultimately be the largest renovation project Rutgers has undertaken, construct state of the art laboratories. Modernize and expand medical school teaching and graduate and student support services. Reconfiguring the building entrances and update the public and community spaces. Phase two of the architectural and engineering documents, the bid purposes have been completed. There's a renewed focus on securing construction funding we requested from the state last year. One hundred to twenty million dollars, we got one. Not one hundred, but one million. The, the, but we do have a plan now. So twenty, twenty seven million was, was passed by the Board of Governors and funded for phases one to three. Again, there was that extra one million we got from the state for medical student amenity space. The Board of Governors, not this meeting, but the prayer meeting allocated an additional seven for phase four. Pre-construction and facade work, which is now underway, so the outside is beginning to be renovated. This is what it will look like when done. It certainly does not look like that now. This is what the outside will look like when done. Again, with the inside will look like when done. These, these are great, pretty pictures that were great, grateful to Tony for, and, and his team. And, and we, we are hoping that, the, the, that we will have the, the, the funding to be able to, to. Start on it in a much larger way this summer. The other thing underway in Newark, and this was a brilliant plan that Tony and Dave Schultz came up with. Actively working with the Newark Economic Development Authority, University Hospital. And people, partners on the state level to plan for new construction on the Newark campus. Those buildings you can sort of see at the, a little bit on the bottom, sometimes they're referred to, they, they, they're the ADM C. Which I don't even remember sort of motivated, but that stands for. But they were the temporary medical school buildings built fifty years ago. Alan was in those buildings. Again, terrible buildings, leaky, inefficient, waste, raised, waste resources. Sometimes they call the blue buildings or the green buildings, depends on what color they happen to be painted, but the only thing that's changed in fifty years is the paint. The, Tony and Dave came up with, with a plan, you know, that the hospital wanted to build a new hospital. Hoping the state would pay for it at one point three billion dollars. They got fifty million. So that wasn't going to happen anytime soon, but Tony and Dave came up with a great plan to, to be able to, to work to. Knock down part of the ADM C buildings. Build on that side, a parking garage and a new ambulatory care center. Allowing ultimately to be able to knock down the parking garage and the ambulatory center, care center. Across the street, both of which are pretty terrible. And that would make space for someday the hospital being able to really build a hospital tower. And, and have a much better, better hospital accordingly. So rather than the hospital plant reconstruction plan, just stalling and nothing happening. This will be a major step forward in, in doing it at parenthetically, essentially no cost to the university. Moving on, New, New Brunswick. Three major initiatives underway here, the first two by the health system, the third by us. On the left side is the Morris Cancer Center, well underway on, down the street on Somerset Street. If you, you know, New Brunswick, this is called Plum Two, it's a new ambulatory care center. Further down on some Somerset Street, Plum and Somerset. That's where our practice, practices will move. And then on the right side is the Rutgers Health Building, which I'll, I'll focus on more. So this is the Morris Cancer Center, five hundred thousand, eleven story, five hundred thousand square feet, state of the art cancer pavilion. This will really be the state's first freestanding cancer hospital. It include roughly a hundred beds in, in, in the process. Plus lots of other facilities for infusions, for radiation and oncology. So cancer patients will just have to go one place to get all of the cancer care. If you need this kind of level four cancer care, one of the. Sort of Foci of, of CNJ has been that no one in New Jersey should be more than a twenty minute drive from a CNJ doc. And we have explicitly level one care, level two care, level three care, level four care. One level four care center in the country, in the state, that's this building. Two level three centers, Cooperman and ultimately University Hospital in Newark as part of them. Level two care is other hospitals, level one care are outpatient private docs. The Rutgers Health Building, on average, we, we have been recruiting about twenty tenure track faculty per year in the last five years. About twenty, it, it, Robert Johnson Medical School, about twenty five in the last two years. Patient recruitment focuses on our priority research areas as laid out here, these are the areas that we have a track record of particular success. In obtaining funding, especially NIH funding. We anticipate filling half of the Rutgers Health Building upon opening. This building will have the, the translational research, this building will have three parts. One part will be the first, will be the first two years of medical school, which are now in Piscataway. That was a current way to design a medical school fifty years ago. But nowadays, medical students want to be, see patients sooner and be near the hospital. And so this will move the first two years of medical school into New Brunswick. The other biggest part of the building will, will be translation research labs. Laboratories, wet bench, sixty, sixty wet, twenty dry. You know, sixty laboratories of, of the kind that you used to. And twenty principal investigators who don't require laboratories for their research. They will be in the translation research building, and again, the idea is, is that, that they can be near the hospital to provide patient care when. The patients need them and do the research in this building. Again, the plan is that about half of it would be filled with current and newly recruited faculty upon opening, which is going to be soon. And that it'll be organized programmatically to foster collaboration with the plan for ninety percent occupancy within two to three years. This is what it will look like. The helix is the site, which will ultimately have three buildings. This is the Rutgers Health Building with the new logo. On it. There are already two restaurants and a bar that have signed on for the ground floor. The, this was a site that they had trouble renting, finding anyone to move into over six years. Because there wasn't an anchor tenant, we grew big enough that we needed the space, we became the anchor tenant. And very soon after that, Nokia Bell Labs said, if the Rutgers Health is going to be there, we want to be there too. And, and so what the, the, all of the Nokia Bell Labs research space will be here in New Brunswick, right next to us. And it will be an enormous synergy for us and for them, for us to be right next to each other. The third piece of this building is, is much smaller than, than our part, a piece of our building, much smaller than our part is, is incubator space. For companies that spin off from our research. And again, being near, near Nokia is important, bioengineering developments and so on, are really a key part. And it'll, it'll have this very nice courtyard underway. It is well underway. Notice this. In here, inside, it's what gives the site the name, the helix, is this part and this part in here in terms of helices. If you look at the interior design, this is what it will look like. This is what it will look like. This is what it will look like. And again, here's, here's the helix. It, it is well underway now proceeding on schedule, anticipated occupancy by calendar twenty five, that's not really true. But that's what the developer says. It's, it's, it's planned for twenty five, so the governor can be there for the ribbon cutting. But in reality, it'll be, we will be moving in, we're planning on moving in in early twenty six, the first medical school class will move in summer of, of, of twenty six. And parenthetically, the building will be twenty five feet higher than the CNJ building. Or the clinical academic building with Rutgers Health signage all around. So that every train that goes back and forth between New York and Philadelphia will, will, will see our advertisement as, as part of that. The, this is again, Nokia is, is locating there too. This is what it looks like, you know, a couple of weeks ago. If you walk by there now, you'll see it is a massive, massive building. And when you look at it and see how big it looks, the, the second helix is now there in steel. But if you look at what the building looks like, that's only half the building. So ultimately, the building will be twice that size and, and, and height, and it's also very, very, very deep. This is going to be a magnificent building for us to occupy and move into. Shifting gears, we've also just very recently opened the Brand Behavioral Health Treatment Center and Residence. Thanks to the generosity of, of Marlene Brand. The, her daughter, when an adolescent developed mental health problems and couldn't get care anyplace in the state. Or any place in the mid-Atlantic that, that would, would meet her needs. Ultimately, she was treated and recovered extremely well at McLean up at Harvard. But it gave her a sense of what she wanted and what you, and, and her vision. And so we broke ground on that recently, and in fact, we just dedicated it. Jonathan was there, it's a magnificent, magnificent facility, which, which. It's on which campus, Cook Campus, Cook, yeah, this, it is. Yeah, so it's a great setting for it because it's pastoral. Which is really important to the treatment aspect of it as, as, as well. And, and so it, it's a great setting, it, it is, it's also parenthetically an amazing building to build for forty one million dollars. I mean, it is a gorgeous, gorgeous building. Again, it was all done with fundraising in terms of the, the. Marlene came with, up with, with thirty million of it and then additional fundraising raising paid the rest. But again, IPO did a fantastic job of creating what looks like a luxurious inn. For, for a, a very efficient price. Shifting gears, preparing for a new Rutgers School of Medicine. Board of Governors voted unanimously to support the merger of the two med schools. We are now no longer referring to it as a merger of schools, but as a new school. We're standing up a new school, the theme of which will probably be health equity or health justice. It's going to be Rutgers, the Rutgers School of Medicine. And, and it, it is by doing it as, as in, by conceptualizing it as a new school instead of a merger. We're not restricted to what either school now has. But the process that has been underway really now led by the two deans has been fantastic. And they're leading an effort, the effort with, to, to, and, and people are very involved, very. There, there have been over three hundred and fifty faculty, staff and students who are involved in, in this process. That the Patrick probably just sent, put on the portal. A, a document that you can look at as a Rutgers School of Medicine by the numbers to show you all of the outreach that there's been, which is enormous. But just to give you a, a little bit of a sense of it. The first thing the committees did is come up with these guiding principles. First, do no harm. Second, value and respect our faculty, staff and trainees. Third, demonstrate a commitment to excellence in each of our mission areas. Fourth, remain steadfast in our obligation to patient safety and well-being. Lead with kindness, active listening and compassion. Create extensive opportunities for inclusive and participatory dialogue throughout the planning process. And again, the document just put in the portal, I won't bore you with all of those numbers and slides, but you'll, you'll see it all laid out there. Respect the unique history, culture and diversity of our institutions as we create an integrated Rutgers School of Medicine. Seek to advance the shared values of our communities. They created a, a series of different integration task forces. One on research, one on clinical, one on community engagement, one on graduate programs, one on communication, IT, staff experience, faculty experience, student experience. These have been supplemented, there's a webpage that has an enormous amount of information. There's hundreds of different emails that have been gone out to communicate, hundreds again of faculty and staff who are participating. And a lot of outreach as well to politicians and, and to the public. They were joined together on, with Mayor Baraka on Facebook Live. You know, a lot of engagement with the community, external community, as well as engagement with the internal community. In order to, to bring people around, people are really excited about this now. As the representative of the two schools get together, their first reaction was, gee, you're not that different than us after all. Well, they're both trained doctors, so they, you know, competencies and so on, but they do it in different ways. And they've learned from each other, and the new school will basically take the best of both going forward. The new school also will, will ironically giving, given, given all of the concern about our Newark and are we not going to be, be supporting Newark. In order to meet the accreditation requirements, we have to actually accelerate the renovation of the Medical Science Building in Newark. Because one of the requirements is that the two schools for the students has to have comparable experiences. And for one to have gorgeous new facilities and the other to have these terrible leaky buildings. So, so the, we, Tony and his team are in the process of, of modifying the next phase of the renovation of MSB to include. The student space in that next phase, so that, 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 that can happen more, more, more quickly. A lot of excitement in, in the two communities about bringing it all together. Shifting gears again, match day. As you may or may not know, match day is a very exciting day in medical schools. Where, where the seniors get handed, literally handed a piece of paper that says, this is where you will spend. The next three to five to whatever years of your life in terms of doing residences going forward. We had a match rate at Robert Wood of ninety seven percent, at New Jersey Medical School is ninety five percent. Both of those are larger than the national average. Our medical school graduates are now attending the, the, the best programs in the country. Of those, they, they will, twenty five will be doing residencies at Robert Wood. Twenty six will do residencies in New Jersey Medical School, seven will be doing residencies at other Barnabas affiliated facilities. Keep in mind, we now get six thousand applications for a hundred and seventy places at each of our two medical schools. This has tripled in the ten years, which is not a national phenomenon, that's a local phenomenon. There was an increase in applications to medical school during the COVID years, people refer to as the, as the Fauci blip. Which went back down again. They, that's not what we're talking about here. The, the, the Rutgers Medical Schools now, we each get, get six thousand applications for a hundred and sixty places. That the employment, just talking about other schools. Our School of Pharmacy, ninety five percent of our graduates obtain employment or postgraduate education. The Dental School, ninety percent matched employment or postgraduate education. School of Public Health, ninety four percent employed immediately on graduation. The School of Health Professions, graduates have nearly a hundred percent placement rate in the first three months of graduation. Just as a context, which is important, School of Health Professions is the largest school of its kind in the country. It, it is perhaps probably the number one or two such school in the country. Sixty percent of its students are underrepresented minorities. And the, and the jobs on placement are a hundred percent. It is based in Newark, again, a real pipeline into, into careers for, for, for Newark kids. School of Nursing, ninety seven percent of graduates are employed within six months of graduation. Look at licensure pass rates in the School of Pharmacy, first time passage is ninety five percent, way higher than national rates. School of Nursing, ninety five percent, School of Dental Medicine, a hundred percent. The School of Health Professions, Physician Assistance, ninety nine percent. These are much higher pass rates than, than national rates. Again, shifting gears, I'm almost done. The, the, the Rutgers Health Service Corps was officially launched this spring. It offers training and opportunities to an ever-growing array of service learning areas. It's built on the foundation of the BACS Core. During the pandemic, we had large numbers of students volunteering to assist with vaccinating and with, with testing. The, the, we wanted to take advantage of that and mobilize the, the Rutgers Health Service Corps in, in, in order to do that. The goal is to train and engage members in service learning opportunities. The current areas of focus are listed there on the, on, on the bottom, I won't read through them. But to date, three hundred and fifty, we have, we have funds for twenty, three hundred and fifty students applied. Including students from all over the university who want, want to participate in this, the service learning activities. So I'll almost end with my goals, the RBHS goals for the second decade of its existence as Rutgers Health. Maintenance of physical health as a chancellor unit, surpassing additional Big Ten peers in federal research funding as we chalk up our rankings. One by one of, over the Big Ten peers. Ongoing development of our first and best academic health system, along with our partners at RWJ Barnabas Health. Maintain our renewal of the NCI Comprehensive Cancer Center, already done. Maintain the renewal and renew the, the CTS A, again, already done. Increase in philanthropy, both large, single donations and annual given, giving. Completion of major capital construction projects, particularly the Rutgers Health Building in New Brunswick. And the wholesale renovation of the Medical Science Building in Newark. Increased recognition and reputation of Rutgers Health as a brand. And LCME accreditation of the Rutgers School of Medicine circa twenty twenty eight. So I'll end, as I begin, our shared goal is to build one of the best academic health centers in the country with an emphasis on one. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for Chancellor Strom? Jean?
This isn't a question. This is a shout out to Dr. Norman Edelman, who came to Rutgers Medical School in the late sixties. And they switched it to U of D and J, and he was really outraged. And I'm sure, Dr. Edelman, you are so thrilled that we now will have again a Rutgers Medical School. Congratulations.
Yeah, and and to be clear, we deliberately chose not the name Rutgers Medical School, but Rutgers School of Medicine, so that it didn't look like it was New Brunswick, the old New Brunswick School taking over Newark.
I've seen Roberta and Bob and Linda. I'm sorry. Who started?
Oh, Norm's trying to answer.
Oh, I just remarked that we have a long history together. But yes, that was a goal almost as soon as I arrived. It's to reestablish the Rutgers Medical School. It took a while.
Okay, Roberta, then Bob, then Linda.
I have a question. Brian, you mentioned there were six thousand applicants. What percentage of those applicants were international?
Very few.
Very few?
Very few. The the six thousand, they're disproportionately from New Jersey. Our acceptances are about eighty percent from New Jersey and twenty percent out of state. We medical schools rarely accept international students. Residencies are a different story, but 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 medical medical schools rarely, because we have so many Americans who want to apply. And even the international students and residents are orphaned Americans who went international because they couldn't get into a medical school in the US.
No, I know, because one of my neighbors who graduated from the Honors College here was so upset, he didn't even get interviewed. He was telling, yeah, so I guess that's an example of the caliber.
Yeah, yeah, no, again, maybe six thousand applicants for a hundred and sixty places. And it just, you know, each of the two schools have a little bit of a different admissions process, which is interesting. Again, they need to decide what they want to do coming together. Are they going to have one or are they going to keep them more separate? You know, in at New Jersey Medical School, they use a much more traditional system. You look at the the grades, the GPA, you look at the MCATs. You decide a subset, and it's certainly a small minority, to interview. And then you make a decision with all the information. That's what most schools do. Robert Wood actually has a very different style. You look at the GPA, you look at the MCATs, you choose a much smaller subset to interview. Then they they come for a very structured, all day set of interviews. And the decision is made one hundred percent based on the interview. The people making the decision don't know the GPA and the MCATs. It's just based on the on the interview, the idea being to get more humanistic physicians.
Bob?
Yeah, thank you, Brian. So you've underscored multiple times the importance of recruiting people, high level people to RBHS. What are, why do people come? How do you get the great people? What do we offer? And why does, you know, a Bob Grossman come from Emory to Rutgers?
So, interesting question. I think a lot of it is the excitement of what we're building. You know, when when I recruit leaders, I say, if you want a a maintenance job, don't come. If you want to build, this is the place to build. There is no place in the country that is building the way we are we are building and has the excitement to be able to to do that. We also have a lot more, to use a medical term, we have a lot more plasticity, which most state schools don't in terms of of being able to tailor positions to fit the person. So you're not just slotting somebody in in an existing position. The 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 others, the other people we recruited, all of the excitement of of, you know, when we interview people, they're meeting with our prior recruits who who are here, and they sort of see what the environment is. The environment is just incredibly exciting and incredibly dynamic. And and this is clearly well known nationally now. I mean, the reputation of Rutgers and medicine is completely different than it was ten years ago. Of course, ten, ten years ago, eleven years ago, there was none because they didn't have it. But the reputation of U of U of D and J and the medical schools. And sort of people want to come here to build and create and to be able to to develop the future. You know, as I've said often, coming from Penn, you know, Penn has the perfectly shaped healthcare system to the year two thousand. Rutgers is much better positioned for two thousand twenty or two thousand thirty, part because we have it all under one roof. And and it's not just physicians doing it all. You know, it's, you know, we have nurses, pharmacists, dentists, you know, all and and strongly advocating with the state to let people practice at the top of their license in the process rather than sort of being under the thumb of physicians in the process. But mostly, it's an exciting environment. There's just a lot happening. I mean, you see our grant growth, you see our, you know, and our our prior recruits make it easy to recruit the next recruits.
So Linda, then Susan, then Marty.
Mine is just a comment. I recently, just like two days ago, I was in the Newark Airport Terminal A. Rutgers is everywhere. I felt so proud. So your marketing is working.
Hopefully, you've seen billboards, you've seen TV, but most of it is social media because that's cheap. Oh, you're talking about, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, no, those, yeah, those are the things I was showing you that, but taking advantage of Mike's investments. Yes.
Susan, then Marty, then Squire.
Yeah, I think this was fantastic and obviously doing a lot. What type of metrics are you using to measure what the ultimate outcome will be for patients as a result of all of this?
So a great question. We have, we have finally gotten now our health systems to come along to measure in great detail metrics ranging from mortality to patient satisfaction to to, you know, fewer line infections, fewer, I mean, there's a very extensive process of. And in fact, if you look across Robert Wood, if you look at, for example, mortality at Robert Wood, adjusted for cases over the years observed over expected was about one point eight, meaning meaning an eighty percent higher mortality rate than expected. It is now point eight. So 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 the the mortality is lower than expected for the whole country, adjusted for the the kind of cases that they have. And so there's a lot of attentiveness to metrics here, a hundred percent right, and that didn't exist before.
Marty, then Squire, then Brielle.
Well, a tremendous job and it's certainly a huge, huge undertaking on every different level. But I was curious as to, you spoke about six thousand applicants for a hundred and seventy positions. So where do our Rutgers students fall within this? You know, that how many percentage that have applied and have been accepted? So that we can then go back and see what we need to do to make sure that our students are able to participate. You know, as a undergraduate, to make sure our students are able to participate in all this wonderful growth.
So great, great question. I can't, we have the numbers. I don't remember the data offhand. But but there's a substantial proportion of each medical school class, ballpark, ten or twenty percent, that that are from Rutgers. Rutgers does a really good job of preparing its undergrads for in general and for medical school and does a really good job of mentoring them, coaching them, helping them apply the pre-med office. And Fran's operation is excellent in in terms of helping people prepare for for medical school. So whether they want to come to us or they go elsewhere, we also have a number of pipeline programs with with the with with, so we, you know, we have a pipeline program between Rutgers Newark and New Jersey Medical School. We have a pipeline program between the Honors College in New Brunswick and Robert Wood Johnson Medical School. Antonio and I have talked now about developing a pipeline program from Camden as well. People who are in the Honors College, for example, in New Brunswick, don't have to take the MCATs. If they were smart enough to get into the Honors College and continue to do really well as undergrads, they can do it as a seven years instead of eight years together and skip the MCATs in the process. So as as a pipeline program to be able to get them. So 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 it'd be really working together well and and even more as time has gone on with our undergraduate programs. That said, most undergrads don't get into medical school. That's nothing unique to Rutgers. That's a question of how how competitive medical schools are. I think one of the things we want to push on is we're much more than just a medical school. I mean, our nursing school has people, there's a massive nursing need, New Jersey nationwide. We had waitlisted students, that is, people who we would have accepted, nursing students for undergraduate nursing, a thousand. Is that many additional people we would have accepted and trained to add to the nursing workforce, the rate limiting step being a clinical site to be able to do it. So we are expanding the class slowly based on clinical sites and more using simulation. But we can't come close to to meeting the need and and the capacity. The good news, by accident, this year, our nursing school accepted their normal number of people and and again, they start as undergraduates in either Newark or New Brunswick, as the case may be. And and a disproportionate number of them have now accepted to come. So the incoming nursing school class is going to be much bigger than they thought it was going to be.
I just want to follow up. So how many more medical students are you planning? All this process, will we be able to expand the number of medical students?
We we are not expanding the number of medical students. From a clinical site point of view, that the we're combining the two med schools, but but the the number of medical students will not increase. We can't, it already will be the largest or second largest in the country, but 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 irrespective of that, we don't have the clinical sites to do it. And especially because more and more medical care is shifting to outpatient rather than inpatient and and making that even even harder. So so it's even more important that we train people who are not just physicians. Again, I talked about nurses, our PA program, our physician assistant program. We have a thousand applicants. We can accept fifty. Be again, extremely selective. Again, rate limiting stepping being clinical sites. So so it's a, but yet healthcare has grown, it's approaching twenty percent of the gross national product. So as a place for undergrads to get jobs, that's going back to your question is, you know, part of the message is don't think just about medical school.
Squire and then Brielle.
Thank you, Chair. This, this is, it's less of a question, more of a statement. I just want to reiterate and publicly acknowledge the great work that you really are focusing on health equity. I call it social justice in health. You are leading the way in addressing this issue in the United States. I know the data from years ago, but that half of medical students and residents have false beliefs based off of race, which has been causing racial bias in their treatment. I was, I was at the grad medical school graduation early this year, and they changed the Hippocratic oath to now include health equity, which is important. And we were trying to address such a big issue. You need multiple institutes, not just, you know, schools, but governments to really address the issue. So thank you, thank you, thank you. It's much needed work.
Yeah, thank you. And and as I think I mentioned, we we're close to a decision to actually have the entire Rutgers School of Medicine focus on health equity or health justice as the theme for the for the new school. So again, it's not just combining two schools, it's creating a new school, and that will be the 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 theme of it. Now, that said, it's hard because our average student graduates with a debt of two thousand, of two hundred thousand dollars. So it's hard to do health equity and to attract some of the kind of people who we would want to when we don't have a lot of scholarship money. And 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 so what we're hoping to do is is use that theme of of to be able to to at least tap debt. So it's not going to be scholarship money for scholarship money. It's basically saying, saying, no one should be able to have it. No one should have to graduate with a debt larger than a certain amount and use their use our scholarship money to offset that.
Brielle online, Wilma, and then Mark.
Hi, sorry, my camera's not on. But I did want to say thank you for the presentation. You really whipped through seventy slides pretty quickly. That was impressive. And I also wanted to, just as a point of inquiry, I love the New Brandt Treatment Center and I love behavioral health efforts that this university is doing. But I was just wondering if the center is partnering with CAPS, the Counseling Center in New Brunswick, or are they going to remain separate entities?
I guess I'm not, I thank you in terms of the slides. I warned you I talk fast, but and I'm not sure what the CAPS center is. Fran probably knows better.
Okay, I'll probably send her an email then, so.
Yeah, and and to be clear, the Brandt Center is a joint program between Fran and us. To be very explicit, it again courses chancellor units. And the idea of this was Fran's idea when she was dean of, because that.
Perfect. Okay, thank you for the clarification. I appreciate it.
Wilma and then Mark.
Thank you so much, Dr. Strom, for the presentation. Last June, I went on the tour of the Newark Medical School. So I was thrilled to hear that improvements were being made. What is the projected timeline for its start and for its completion?
So the the start is underway now in terms of the facade. In terms of completion, Tony conveniently walked out. Yeah, but 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 it'll probably, I would guess, a decade. I mean, this is a big undertaking, both because the amount of money it's going to cost and because we're using that building. And 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 so you need to shift people from section to section. The need is enormous. That building is such a.
It's from the fifties.
Yeah.
The eighteen fifty.
Yeah. No, it's horrendous. Thank you.
Mark.
Back, okay. And I just wanted to share something when we were sitting down with Governor Christie. The woman who is my co-pilot has passed away unfortunately. But my background is in the intercommercial business and taking telephone calls in forty nine countries around the world. And I remember saying to Governor Christie, do you realize that seventy three percent of all the phone calls that come into what was then the medical center, okay, never get returned? Said, what do you think you're doing? I said, these are your citizens who, you know, who've, some of them voted for you, obviously, because you're the governor. Said, but seventy three percent of the phone calls in last year for people who wanted to make appointments or come into what was then the medical school, you know, what it was in those days, are not getting seen. This is unacceptable. And it was sort of funny when we both looked at each other and we said, Governor, do you want this to become public? I mean, no business in the world can take, not answer seventy nine percent of the phone calls, particularly a business that happens to be, you know, a public service. So I just wanted to share that with you because that sort of hopefully can give you really how bad it really was. You could have had the best medical service in the world, but if no one ever called you back when you needed an appointment, what did it matter? So I just wanted to share that with you. He said, that's why we're sitting here, because I want this thing to go to Rutgers. And he realized, you know, we uncovered a lot of information that was, I mean, it was shocking to me, okay, and I, that's the business I ran, which is this, you know, telephone business, basically. And he just said, you know, you guys got to take this over. And at that point in time, Bob Barci was the president of the university. And I remember walking into Brian's office at the University of Pennsylvania and saying to Brian, well, we're going to get this medical school. I'm pretty certain this is going to happen. You know, Bob wants you, Bob Barci would like you to come to run it. What do you think? And I was like, almost fell off my chair when he said, I'm on board. Don't worry about it. I'm coming. So it was, I just wanted to share that because when you think about it, you know, here you are running a state service and your resident or your state citizens are calling up who need medical assistance. And the state was not answering those people. You know, it doesn't matter what part party you were. It's like, hold it, folks. This is, you know, you're running a state hospital and you're not responding to these people. What do you expect people to do? So I just wanted to share that because that's one of the sort of facts that were buried. You know, that really got Governor Christie to say, okay, you guys take this over, figure out how we do it.
Mike Duhamel have the last question.
Okay, just two follow ups that I can very quickly. One is, and the first one, Mark, I've told Mark already. Even more scary perhaps is shortly after I got here, of those calls, half of them were clinical calls, not appointments. There are people calling with clinical questions and medication questions and not getting their phone calls answered. The other scary thing is, and hopefully there's no tape recording on, but 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 the level of care that was, doctors were pouring urine into. doctors were pouring urine into the sinks. I mean, that's what what these practices were like, again, all pre Rutgers. So so it's a, yeah, it's needed a lot of work, it's not done. There's plenty of work still to go, but it's certainly a whole lot better than it was before.
Mike, last question.
Yeah, I would just say it's more of a comment and a compliment based on that. Governor Christie would come to our class every year for fifteen years, a class that I teach in Brunswick. And he told the story once about the merger. And there's obviously a lot of controversy around the merger, what was going on. He said, when they look back twenty five years from now, he said, that will be the single greatest accomplishment that he was part of because he saw all those problems and basically saw what this transformation could be. So to to watch a presentation like this and to see all this come to fruition, it's incredible what you're doing. So thank you for this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chancellor Strom. I think we all have an idea of how much R B H S and comms is here at the university. And we think of the medical schools reflexively, but there's also, Chancellor Strom pointed out, a lot of the undergraduate schools, a lot of the graduate programs. And we've made a lot of progress. And as Dr. Schwartz can attest, the way the medical school looks like, we have a ways to go. We do have members of the public that have signed up.
Proud of our trainees, such as you.
We do have members of the public that have signed up to speak on specific agenda items will be called upon to provide remarks. Speakers will be allocated, two minutes for comment must speak the agenda item that they signed up for. Luke Spaltrow. Who is online?
Hi, are folks able to hear me? Hi, so my name is Luke. I am currently an alumni of Rutgers University. First and foremost, I would just like to speak on divestiture from Israeli apartheid. I would like to name the J C O I members because unfortunately, we had to go through a Oprah request to find out who you guys are, even though you guys are public servants. So for the Board of Governors, that's, excuse me if I'm mispronouncing your name, but that's Mary Di Martino, Tilak Law, Harvey Schwartz, Amy Towers, William Best. And for the Board of Trustees, that is Gary Troopfka, Chuck Chaplin, Robert Falzone, Mary Pap Marco and Alan Crosta. I find it absurd that we have not divested from Israeli apartheid and genocide, even though the students have voted overwhelmingly and have done so much to force you guys into hearing their demands, yet you guys refuse to listen and listen. I am speaking at the Board of Trustees because you guys are ultimately the ones who have more power over the money. In nineteen eighty five, when this university divested from South African apartheid, after eight years of students calling for divestment after the Soweto massacre, the Board of Governors divested one point nine million, you guys divested five point nine million. We have people here who are alumnis of classes of of eighty six. You guys saw that with your own eyes, for crying out loud. Today, we are at two day two hundred and fifty eight of 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 the siege of Gaza and the genocide of Gaza. Just yesterday, Navi Palé, the Chair of a U N inquiry into the war, testified before the U N Human Rights Council. Quote, Israeli authorities are responsible for war crimes, crimes against humanity and violations of international humanitarian and human rights law, including extermination, intentionally directing attacks against civilians and civilian objects, murder or willful killing, using starvation as a method of war, forcible transfer, gender persecution targeting Palestinian men and boys, sexual and gender based violence amounting to torture and cruel or inhuman treatment. President Hawley, you had you had some some comments about democracy at the beginning of this meeting, which honestly, I I find truly shameful. The fact that, again, the Russo referendums have overwhelmingly voted for divestment, yet you guys still refuse to divest or cut ties with Tel Aviv University. At New Brunswick, you brought Monmouth County SWAT teams and EMS was put on a mass trauma protocol. As you guys, as as you guys brought in massive police presence to clear a peaceful demonstration. And this was right after Columbia and UCLA, the violence and the bloodshed that we saw when 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 police and SWAT teams were brought on campus. Absurd, the cops were ready to riot. Similar events happened in Newark, yet, you know, they weren't given the same treatment like New Brunswick. They weren't even given any sort of, you know, announcement beforehand that they were going to be cleared. There was no university wide email from the president explaining the situation because, you know, they're always neglected compared to New Brunswick. Police there came with no notice before.
Mr. Spaltrow, you're at four minutes.
SWAT team came, back professors were pushed, community members had R U P D putting their knees on their backs. And you guys want to work with the Anti-Defamation League? How does this work to promote democracy by any means? It it's been on record that Roy Bullock in nineteen ninety three admitted to selling information to the South African government. What makes you guys think that they're not going to do the same with the apartheid state of out of Israel? President of.
Thank you, Mrs. Spaltrow. B B Stewart? Are you present or online? Not seeing B B Stewart or hearing B B Stewart, we're going to move on. President Hawley, you have any comments you'd like to make?
No, thank you.
Wise decision. So we're going to now move on. I like to move on and look at the minutes from our meeting from March the nineteenth, our Board of Trustees meeting. They've been posted in the portal, are there any additions or corrections? Okay, may I have a second? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All against? Any abstentions? Thank you, the minutes are passed. Want to move on now to resolution amending our charge the trustees executive committee. And what we want to add to the charge of the executive committee is we want to have a way where we can make sure that our existing trustees, where they're living. As you know, we are required to send one person to the Board of Governors from Essex and one from Middlesex. And certainly, when people come on to the trustees, we know that, but in twelve years, a lot happens. People move, people move in, people move out. We want a way to be able to follow that. And we feel that should be under the auspices of the executive committee. So in doing so, we would ask, we would do a poll every year of the members of the trustees. Not a big thing, asking them, do you still live at the address when you came on the Board of Trustees? Yes, I do, that's the end of it. If it's no, I don't, then please tell us where you live and provide proof of that. And we have basically, legally, there are seven different proof of residencies, which I'm sure you're all familiar with, you need to provide two of them. I'll read them if you'd like me to, but we kind of think on executive committee that this is, shall we say, a no brainer. I'd like to ask for a motion to accept this. So move, then there's a second, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All against, any abstentions? Thank you very much, that motion passes. Moving on now, the executive committee minutes are posted in on the portal. I do want to draw your attention to the proposed schedule of meetings for two thousand twenty four and twenty five. May I have a motion? Maybe someone on the phone can make that motion. May I have a motion to, so move, may I have a second, a second? Any discussion? All in favor? All against, any abstentions? Thank you very much, that passes. Okay, I'd like to now call on Dr. Deborah Lynch, the Chair of the Nominating Committee, to present the Nominating Committee report.
Thank you. The Nominating Committee of the Board of Trustees met ten times between August thirtieth, twenty twenty three and March seventh, twenty twenty four. I would like to personally thank the members of the committee, Linda Rivers, Mary Papa Marco, Bob Friedman, Norm Edelman, Linda Caldwell Epps and Alan Crosta as an ex officio. We spend a lot of time on this committee. And at times, we were calling meetings at on very short notice. And everyone was very cooperative in giving up their time and meeting. And personally, I want to say thank you to all of you because without you guys and your input, my job would have been much, much more difficult. The Nominating Committee recommendations on the candidates for election for the following positions have been posted on the governing board portal. Officers of the Board, Alumni Trustees, Charter Trustees, member of the Rutgers Research and Educational Foundation, members of the Executive Committee and members of the Nominating Committee. Mr. Chairman, I would now like to present for the Board's consideration and approval the nominations for these positions as detailed on the proposed slate of nominees posted on the governing portal. On behalf of the Nominating Committee, I recommend the following nominations for the officers indicated for the term July one, twenty twenty four to June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. Treasurer J. Michael Gower, Secretary Kimberly M. Pasta and Associate Secretary Patrick L. Mabello. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
May I have a second? There's a second, thank you, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor? Any against, any abstentions? Thank you, continue, Dr. Lynch.
On behalf of the Nominating Committee, I recommend the following nomination as an alumna trustee for the term July one, twenty twenty four to June thirtieth, twenty thirty, Kim Case. I also recommend the following alumna trustee nomination for the term July one, twenty twenty four to June thirtieth, twenty twenty five, to fill Alan Crosta's unexpired term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty five, Indu Lu. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a second, thank you, is there any discussion? No discussion, any, all in favor, say aye. All against, any abstentions? Thank you, that passes, continue, Dr. Lynch.
Ms. Hendricks, would you please step out of the room? On behalf of the Nominating Committee, I recommend the following nominations as Charter Trustees for the terms July one, twenty twenty four to June thirtieth, twenty thirty. Carol Tekla Chris, Joyce P. Hendricks, James P. McCarthy and Jason J. Redd.
May I have a second? Second, any discussion? All in favor, aye. All against, any abstentions? Thank you, Dr. Lynch, please continue.
Mr. Friedman, Ms. Parker Marco and Ms. Perez, please leave the room at this time and join Ms. Hendricks while the Board votes on the election of the members of the Rutgers Research and Educational Foundation. Also, will Mr. Covington and Dr. La Cadre please leave the room at this time and remain there while the Board votes on the election of the members of the Rutgers Research and Educational Foundation and the Executive Committee? On behalf of the Nominating Committee, I recommend the following nominations for the membership of the Rutgers Research and Educational Foundation for the term July one, twenty twenty four to June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. Anthony J. Covington, Robert H. Friedman, Joyce P. Hendricks, Unique D. La Cadre, Mary Papa Marco and Elsie Perez. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a second, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor, please say aye. Any against, any abstentions? Thank you, let's bring Ms. Hendricks, Mr. Friedman, Ms. Papa Marco and Mr. Perez back into the water. The warm is, water's warm. Congratulations, all. Dr. Lynch, please continue.
Okay, Mr. Harris, could you please leave the room at this time and join Mr. Covington and Dr. La Cadre while the Board votes on the election of the members of the Executive Committee? All right, on behalf of the Nominating Committee, I recommend for approval to the Board the following nominations for membership on the Executive Committee of the Board of Trustees for the term July one, twenty twenty four to June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. Anthony J. Covington, Christina R. Foglio, David L. Harris and Unique D. La Cadre. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a second, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All against, any abstentions? Thank you. Let's bring Mr. Covington and Dr. La Cadre and Mr. Harris back into the room. Congratulations. Dr. Lynch, please continue.
Well, Mr. Dr. McDonald and Ms. Perez, please leave the room at this time while the Board votes on the election of members of the Nominating Committee.
Definitely getting their steps in.
On behalf of the Nominating Committee, I recommend the following nominations for membership on the Nominating Committee of the Board of Trustees for the term July one, twenty twenty four to June thirtieth, twenty twenty seven. Walter B. McDonald and Elsie Perez. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a second, any discussion? All in favor? Any against, any abstentions? Thank you. Let's bring in Dr. McDonald and Ms. Perez.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes the report of the Nominating Committee.
Thank you, Dr. Lynch, and I just want to second your comments. Thank you to this Nominating Committee. Nora Edelman, Debbie is Chair, Linda Rivers, Mary Papa Marco, Linda Caldwell Epps, Bob Friedman. It was a lot of work this year, and I think they've done a wonderful job with our officers and the new members coming on. And I think it will pay benefits to this board for many years to come. I'm going to move on with our goals, and this is sort of a how we did and how we're going to get graded. And that'll be up to you. Okay, thanks for putting that up, Pat. So goal number one, each trustee should participate in Scarlet Province Endowment. We have thirty nine voting trustees, we had thirty eight out of thirty nine. The one person who did not contribute has significant medical issues. And so that's where we stand. So I'm counting that as a made, you all can count as you want. Goal two. We don't have the data to determine this. I thought we'd be able to track it, but we are not able to do so at this time. So it wasn't a good goal, and that responsibility lies with me. If you can't measure it, it's a crappy goal. So that's my fault. My thinking was it would be a springboard to increase the number of donors. And as we'll see, we did do that, but I really can't tell you about goal two. Goal three, this is a goal still in progress. Vice Chair-elect, Chair-elect Vice Chair Amy Manchu, Task Force Legislature Game and Chair Mike DeHaem and I communicate with the legislators in the fifteen out of forty districts where we don't have a trustee residing in a district. There are twenty five remaining districts where we do have a trustee residing in a district. We have completed a visit or have appointments to visit in seventeen of these districts. I I'm, of course, I'd love to say twenty five, but I think, given what we faced this year, I'm pretty pleased about it. pretty pleased about it. Remember, the entire legislature was up for election in November. A third of the legislators retired. There were district lines redrawn, and then we move into the spring, and let's say, current events tended to overtake things. So, I think this is a goal that we need to continue to strive for. Not all goals are things like, oh, yeah, they're easy to get, or they're hard to get. There are some goals you have to strive for, and I think this is something that will build value as we move on. So, we are still working on it, and I do want to thank Pete McDonough and his staff so much with helping us with this goal. And Pete wisely had the candy sent directly to the legislators instead of to us to pass on. So, that was, yes. So, that was certainly a good move. Okay, moving on. Oh, finally. Okay, so you should have received a communication from a member of the Executive Committee to see how progress is being made with some of these goals. Actually, I'm, let me go back. Sorry. Goal four, this was six events. This goal was meant by all trustees on December 7th. I estimate at that time, and I reported to you, that our Board members contribute over 500 hours in service to the university, encompassing over 50 unique events and activities. I highlighted some of these events that our Board members participated in or in December meeting. I'm prepared to highlight some of the new events and activities that our trustees as a whole has participated in September, since December. However, in the interest of time, let me summarize that since January 1st, our trustees has delivered another over 500 hours of service to this university, encompassing over 100 unique events and activities, including having at least one trustee or trustee emeritus attend every graduation of every school at every campus. President Holloway, our trustees delivered over 1,000 hours of service to Rutgers, encompassing over 150 unique events and activities for the academic year. Thank you, my fellow trustees, for answering the call to be part of the life of our university and making our beloved community stronger. Okay, going on to our Board and Leadership Goals. Goal number one, 100% participation, as I said, we're 38 out of 39, one person with significant health issues. Goal number two, you can read the numbers, 158 donors of Scarlet Promise Endowment last year, 274 this year. Darn good. Goal three, as Secretary Pasta says, raising money is where the rubber meets the road. 23, 124, 595, 24, 235, 489. Just to give you an idea, where are we at with this endowment? Total endowment for Scarlet Promise Endowment, $9.8 million. Last year, $9.2 million. Luckily, we've had a nice market to help us along. But that's an extraordinary achievement by this Board that was started way back when, when Bill was Chair. But that's something we can really be proud of, and David will talk a little bit about the meeting later on in his report, but what a fantastic job you did and this committee did this year. Goal four, we've heard from all the chancellors, Chancellor Strom today, so we checked that one. Goal five, we had two events, the RU Cool Tour in November and the Institute of Jazz Studies in March. Goal number six, we had a retreat on April 10th. We had a great attendance. Goal number seven, the Meet and Greet Program. Thanks to Squires for Vance for leading this effort. Events on October 30, January 25, and May 8. Goal eight, the trustee, new mentors, one voting and one emeritus, new board member. The goal was completed. Thank you to trustee mentor Unique LaCalle and trustee emeritus mentor Wilma Harris for serving as a mentor to Jennifer Bender. Thank you to trustee mentor Anthony Covington and trustee emeritus Frank Hunley for serving as mentors to Faison Amjad. And thank you to trustee mentor Linda Rivers and trustee emeritus Mary DiMartina for serving as mentors to Dina Elkins. Well done. They have really adjusted well to joining our Board. As Vice Chair Johnson says, sometimes it's like drinking from a fire hose, but thanks to your help, they are wonderful members and participants in our Board. Goal nine, continued communication via email updates. I've communicated with you at least once a month. I've also had seven meet and greets coming around the state, so I consider that completion, but ultimately, you are the judge as to whether that, we met that goal. Does anyone have any questions about our goals? Super. Okay. That allows us to move on, and I'd like to call on David Harris for the report on trustee
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This will be very short, unlike my other three presentations. As Alan pointed out, we had a successful year of raising money, and even though we thought we could tie the request we made to see if they actually came through, and it basically can't be done because there's no mechanism that said, well, Linda referred me, which is what you need, or some other mechanism, and it isn't, it isn't happening. But in the beginning of the year, we said we wanted more people and more money, and we got both. So, however that happened, we worked hard, we had results. At our meeting, our last meeting on May 24th, we reviewed the thank you letter that went through three drafts and that all of you will receive, but also all of the other donors to the Scarlet Promise Endowment. One of the things that the philanthropy committee does at the end of the year is it looks at how the funds are being dispersed. At our meeting, it was clear that we needed better quality information to figure out whether there was an underspend or not. Turns out, there was not. But we're recommending for next year that review the spending twice a year, every six months. If there's anything to adjust, you can flag it, make the adjustments at the end of the year or during the year. The, one of the things that we looked at is that the Scarlet Promise, well, no, the overall contribution for Scarlet Promise Endowment has raised $52.7 million and $19.9 million for current use funds. And that was since President Holloway set a goal of $50 million. We have exceeded the, the goal that was set by President Holloway, and he launched us. He took what we had, and he really launched it. We appreciate how much you have done over this time period, and one of the things that makes it especially important is that the legacy of this giving is really not, so we will be remembered. 20 years from now, nobody's going to know our names, except President Holloway, because he's going to be the one who captained this acceleration. But the, the rest of us are going to be nameless. What will be our legacy is that this body cares for its students and will continue to care for our students because we are committed to them and we identify with them. There is no greater legacy than anonymity and generosity, and for that, I thank you, and we should be proud.
Thank you, David. One thing I do want to add is that, at the suggestion of Vice Chair-elect Papamacu, we composed a letter with the help of the Committee on Trustee Philanthropy that was going to be sent out to all donors who have contributed to Scarlet Promise Endowment this year with David's signature and my signature. So, we kind of try and get that personal touch and try and have people who are donating to this fund, let them know that it really means a lot. I'd like to call on Mr. Kapovka for the report on the Joint Committee on Investments. Oh, hold on, I got a question. Go ahead, Jean.
I know I got at least one person to give that hasn't done it before, so if we could get to the people, if, I would like to know, because I asked like 70 people, I would like to know who in fact contributed, so I could also, in addition to you and David.
I don't know that we're going to be able to do that, Jean, because that's controlled by the foundation, and they are very particular about protecting donor, donors' anonymity, so.
How about, if I could give the list of who I solicited, and they could tell me if they gave it?
Maybe that's something we should take outside the meeting and involve someone in the foundation. Mr. Kapovka.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Alan, for your, your leadership. Appreciate it. The JCOI met on June 3rd. I wanted to give some transparency into what, what we discussed. We finalized our asset allocation targets, which is one of the most important decisions that we make as we work with our consultant and staff to determine estimates of return and estimates of risk and how much deviation we're willing to take. We decided to keep our asset allocation, which is between 60 to 85% in growth assets to, so our endowment continues to grow, of which about a half is in public equities, about a quarter in private equity, and about an eighth in both real estate and opportunistic credit. We have about 10 to 25% in our diversifying strategies and 5 to 10% in fixed income and cash. From the performance standpoint, you know, it's been pretty strong, 1, 3, 5, and 10-year periods. For the one year, which I'll talk about, we're up about 12.8%, which is, is great because we're outperforming our target benchmark, which is up about 12.1%. You know, we like to give a little bit more transparency about how we achieve that, and there's really two main drivers. One is we make asset allocation decisions, so how much in public equity do you want to over-underweight versus private equity? That detracted about 60 basis points because we tend to have a little bit more in private than public, and the S&amp;P up 30%, you know, was difficult to track that, so we lost about 60 basis points there. But on the positive side, the managers that we selected, and the staff spends a lot of time on this, contributed about 130 basis points, you know, choosing better private equity managers than the index, and so that helped us achieve the outperformance. On an ongoing portfolio perspective, we approved adding a seasoned data center manager, and using our watchlist process that we put in place within the last year, we decided to redeem from three managers for a number of reasons, whether it's size and strategy drift or issues around succession, or frankly, performance. So, that's on the ongoing portfolio. On the team update, excited that we welcomed two new members to our operations team, a woman by the name of Margi Bridgeforth, who was a senior analyst at B of A Merrill Lynch, and Mike McCour, who was an analyst at JP Morgan. And on the intern front, I know we try to continue to update, but it's been such a really positive that we all should be very proud of. We welcomed in on May 20th, six new interns, which brings the total interns to about 40 since the program started, and it's important to note that, you know, this is not a one semester program. The vast majority stay for their entire college careers from sophomore year until graduation. One, we're even fortunate to have as a full-time employee, so we're thrilled that that program continues to be quite robust and really helping some of these young Rutgers students get phenomenal jobs. The last thing I would say on a very, hopefully ending on a positive note, our estimated assets under management as of May 31st reached a record high of $2.06 billion, which, thanks to all the hard work from the foundation and the generosity from folks in the room and on the call, as well as some strong returns, is the highest in history. So, happy to take any questions and hopefully can end that on a, on a high note.
Question from Mr. Kapovka. Okay, thank you, Gary. I'd like to call on Ms. Rodriguez now to give the report of Committee on Diversity, Inclusion, and Outreach.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, trustees. The committee reviewed its charge and continued our discussions concerning increasing the committee's effectiveness in our critical outreach function. In that vein, we furthered our, we furthered our pursuit of two things, that is, we drafted a short form pamphlet to distribute to organizations, which highlights our duties and responsibilities as trustees, and we also reviewed an outline of a proposal to create a video that, which highlights the trustee's journey and experience, all of that in the pursuit of, of our outreach to organizations. Both of these endeavors will be furthered with the assistance of our esteemed Secretary's Office and will be passed on for further consideration to the next committee. I just wanted to take one moment to thank the committee members for all of your hard work and your creative approach to this. You know, I asked a lot of questions to try to shake things up a little bit and get us to do things a little bit different, and so I really appreciate all of your input and your creativity. And I just want to take one second here to deviate and say one thing about Alan. Alan, it's rare to come across an individual who embodies a level of sincerity and authenticity that you do, and so you truly are who you purport to be, and I find that very rare. Maybe it's because of my line of work at the SEC, but, but I, but I do find it very rare, and you're a wonderful leader and friend. Thank you. And so, this concludes the report on the Committee on Diversity, Inclusion, and Outreach. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for your kind words. I'm glad I'm not under an SEC investigation.
You're welcome.
At this time. Does anyone have any questions for Terry? Okay, thank you, Terry. I'd like to call on Mike DeHaene to give the report of Task Force and Legislative Engagement. Mike?
Thank you, Chairman. Just a reminder, our, our mission at the Task Force is to improve relationships with individual legislators to make sure that, you know, should there be a need for this Board to ever talk to them beyond what the policy that is set forth by the administration and the Government Affairs Team, that we have personal relationships with legislators, which was, I think, lacking at a time when I came on the Board, at least that was identified by previous leadership, that we would want to do that. So, our goal here is to make sure that legislators know that Rutgers is local to their district, and by meeting with individuals who are on the Board, legislators deal in the commerce of votes and influence in their district, so by meeting people in their district who are members of Board Trustees, that obviously localizes Rutgers to them. I'd like to thank Alan, first and foremost. He's very active in terms of the Chair. The word demanding was used earlier, and I think that's a great one in terms of what he expected of all of us as Board members to accomplish, but also he was very involved and led by example. And one of the, the entire Task Force is great, but I'd like to thank, in addition, especially Ron Garudi, who's leaving the Board, and as a Task Force member, was there from the first moment of the Task Force, and I don't think has missed one meeting we've ever had, or one meeting with a legislator, and his, obviously, his service to Rutgers is incredible and his generosity, but giving of his time as well has been incredible. So, thank you, Ron. And finally, one last thank you, although, as President Holloway said, he's been thanked way too much, is Pete McDonough. He was a great support to, to our Task Force since its inception, and can't thank him enough, and I know Pete and his public service going back, you know, 30-some years to my graduation from Rutgers, and Pete's been a tremendous public servant long before he came to Rutgers, and we were lucky to have him supporting our Task Force. To the, the activities of the Task Force, we did meet with Speaker Coughlin in person at his law office, members of the Task Force. We met over Zoom with Senate Minority Leader Tony Buco and Assembly Minority Leader John Leader Tony Buco and Assembly Minority Leader John DeMeo over Zoom to talk about Rutgers, and Senate President Sotomayor was unable to do so this year, but we spoke offline. He's done it several years in a row, and was appreciative of our outreach, which is just as good as a meeting there. I'd like to thank the trustees. Alan spoke earlier about the number of meetings that we had, and while we don't have every single legislative district covered, because we don't have representatives in every district, the many districts that we did cover is far more than we ever did before because we never really put this on before. So, I commend Alan for pushing this because those meetings are very important. I know I did one with Joyce and Jonathan in our district where we met with Senator Brandtich and Assemblywoman Munoz and Assemblywoman Matt Sekudis, and that's just an example of the many other districts where this was done, where, again, it personalizes Rutgers to them, where they see people of importance in their district, where Rutgers is important to them, and it gives them an opportunity to talk about Rutgers without any ask. Oftentimes, these legislators, every single meeting is an ask. We come in without any ask. We just talk about Rutgers, and they're very happy to hear about Rutgers, and we're very happy that there's no ask of them because they're asked for stuff all day, every day. So, and then finally, a class I teach here at Rutgers, which I view as an extension of the service of the committee, we had Governor Murphy, former Governor Christie. We had Senator Gopala, Senator Brandtich, many staff and other candidates as well, where they come in, they get to see Rutgers, interact directly with Rutgers students, and it's just a fantastic opportunity both for the students and for the elected officials and staff themselves to learn about Rutgers and see the students up close. So, that. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions for Mike? Great, thank you. I'd like to call on Mr. Covington to give the report of the Camden Board of Directors.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Camden Board of Directors met two times since our last meeting, January 25 and May 6. During those times, we heard from student leaders on their experience and the impact that Rutgers Camden had. Additionally, the chancellor highlighted a prestigious award that Rutgers Camden won for the Institute of Transformation on Campus Compact. That is an award that not many win, have won over the past couple of years, so we wanted to highlight that. Additionally, Rutgers Camden received a $2.5 million grant from the Howard Hughes Medical Institute to advance its work on inclusivity within STEM education. Furthermore, as President Holloway already highlighted, the Common App saw Rutgers Camden applications soar to 180% for undergraduate applications. I think that is amazing, and the chancellor also highlighted his 15 and 5 initiatives, and they are moving very robust in that area. I think all of you are aware, but Rutgers Camden is now ranked with U.S. World Reports in the top 50 public universities in the country. So, another amazing accomplishment. In terms of fundraising, for FY 2024, there was a fundraising goal for Rutgers Canada, $4.5 million, and happy to announce that Rutgers Camden has exceeded that goal to over $10 million as of April 2024. And so, last, I'll say, we had Paul Boyd, who is a 2024 Truman Scholar. He was able to present and give his personal story and struggle, how he's overcome a lot of adversity as Rutgers University Camden student, and I believe the first ever Truman Scholar to receive the award from Rutgers Camden. So, as you are aware, Rutgers Camden is doing a whole lot, and I'm proud to serve as vice chair. Before I close, I just want to give a shout out to the other members on the board, which is Mary DiMartino, trustee emeritus. We have James Doherty, trustee emeritus and current chair. We have Walt McDonald over there, and then we have William Tambusi, who is also Board of Governors. So, thank you for all the work that the Camden Board of Directors has been able to do over the past six months, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Anthony. Any questions for Anthony? Great. I'd like to call on Mr. Gower now for his report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Committee on Audit met on May 22. At this meeting, I gave a report providing a summary of the New Jersey Act Supporting Financial Stability in Public Institutions of Higher Education. Mr. Jason Spiegel, the lead KPMG partner, and Ms. Lauren Swiger, the KPMG senior manager, reviewed the FY 24 planned audit procedures, deliverables, and timelines. It's 10 days till the end of the fiscal year. Ms. Michelle Noran, Senior Vice President and Chief Information Officer, and Mr. Guy Albertini, Associate Vice President and Chief Information Security Officer, provided a cybersecurity update. This is now given to the Committee on Audit three times per year. Ms. Rachel Holnick, the Vice President and Chief University Compliance Officer, provided the results of the first comprehensive enterprise risk management risk assessment survey, which is now an annual process. Mr. Eugene Simon, Associate Vice President, provided a data privacy practice group update. Mr. Douglas Orr, Chief Audit Executive, provided the status of the FY 24 Annual Audit Plan, highlights from recently completed reviews, and the implementation status of recommendations from past audits. He also provided the partial FY 25 Annual Audit Plan, which the committee endorsed. The committee then met in private session. Mr. Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions for Mr. Gower? Great, seeing none. Is there any old business? Yes, Debbie.
Two people I forgot to thank when I was thanking people were Kim and Pat, without whom we would not have... That committee would not have functioned. So, I just want to say thank you to both of you.
Yeah, me too.
Any other old business? Is there any new business? Okay, we've done some good. Let's have a little fun. May I have a motion for adjournment, please?
So moved.
May I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Staying? We are adjourned. Thank you.